I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Columbus, July 10th, 2019, 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item will be to approve the consent agenda with the new additions to it, and also with a presentation from the sheriff's office. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then we'll begin with sheriff's office.
Thank you. Identify myself. Most of you are familiar with who I am, but Brian First Commander with Inoka County Sheriff's Office, assigned to the Criminal Investigation Division, and I serve as the liaison between the sheriff's office and the city of Columbus. Tonight is just a real brief kind of update. I printed out some numbers. I'll leave with Elizabeth upon my leaving tonight. The report that I print is of the reports that were generated from calls. These numbers sometimes are different than the calls of service, the dispatch numbers. Some of those end up being like ICRs or not, you know, ICR only that don't generate reports, so don't get into this. So sometimes those numbers aren't the exact same. But this represents the calls for service where, you know, our deputy responds and generates some sort of report. For the second quarter of this year, we had a total of 458 reports for the city of Columbus. Those vary from, you know, those are from 911 hangups to accidents, multiple category of accidents, everything from just a motorcycle PI to hit and runs to property damage. Then there's ones versus deer, fixed objects, you know, so there's different categories. But over the two quarters, there's, you know, roughly 40 of the calls generated were accident-related calls. We had a number, probably a handful of burglaries within Columbus during that time period, anything from entering a shed, which would be the lowest level at a fourth-degree burglary because there are no persons, it's not attached to a house, that would be the lower level, too. We had one, which is a first degree, which would be the entering of a house that was occupied, or an occupied dwelling. That's the first degree. And second degree would be unoccupied, and we had a handful of those. I did notice that on several of the burglaries that we have marked as cleared by arrest, so that means we caught the bad guy, or girl, for that purpose. Sometimes there's a few of those.
And how many burglaries were there? How many burglaries again?
I would say when we count up all the categories, let's see, we had one, two, eight. And that's including fourth degree, lowest level, there's three of those, three third-degree, one second-degree, and one first. And so a number of drug arrests, assaults ranging from domestic type versus a couple incidents at some of the establishments, and a fair amount of medicals.
Does this say car versus deer on that report?
Yeah.
You got a car versus a bear? I heard there was a bear kill on Broadway.
I'm not sure if the, if that one got labeled in under our deer category, but I don't have a, I don't have a bear.
All right. Maybe it was true or not.
Suicide.
Yeah, I have a picture of it. Somebody texted me a picture at 5:00 in the morning. Come get this dead bear.
I was also thinking about grabbing it, too.
Yeah, I didn't see that report.
Have you seen an increase in, I know we've had an increase in traffic, but I know we've had a lot of construction, so if you had a lot more accidents and/or calls for service because, that you feel are due to construction in the city and around?
Hard to quantify because I don't think the numbers are much higher than the normal, than a normal quarter. They're relatively consistent.
Okay.
Any other specific questions? It's been a relatively, you know, consistent quarter. It's not been a lot higher or a lot lower than others. We haven't had a whole lot of thefts down the Lake Drive corridor, which is usually our trouble spots where we, or Denny reminds me of that we're having issues, but I think we were relatively...
I haven't heard any problems from the dealerships down there, so.
Yeah, I haven't.
You guys are doing a good job.
Well, thank you. I'll pass on the word.
Okay.
And so, yeah, that's kind of the basis. We're consistent. Your deputies, so far, we haven't had transfers, or babies, or any of the other things that make us switch out your contract deputy for this year, so.
One of the questions Commander had early for me is, you know, we're going into budget season, and he would like to know whether or not you wanted a formal presentation from the sheriff's department, looking at the contract and the cost of the contract. And sometimes councils have had them come in during our budget review, where they make a short presentation, go out, you know, go over each of the line items, and other times they've had them come in, so it's been a mixed bag. So I open that up to all of you. As part of our budget workshop and discussions, would you like the sheriff's department to come in and present their contract to you?
You say there wasn't going to be an increase?
There's no, we're not asking for increase in hours. However, based on just a couple of factors, there'll be a slight increase. Based on negotiated contracts for the deputies, their salaries were increased by 3%. Para, the police pension, there was an increase, and the employer's contribution was increased by 1.5%. Squad cars, with Ford deciding no longer to make the interceptor coupe, we've had to look at different options, and the different options are more expensive than what the current cars or the current budget. So we're anticipating a slight increase in the squads, so the portion of the contract that has that.
What were you looking at?
Brought that.
What were you looking at for a squad car?
Well, for our general, this year, we bought a couple of Dodges to the Chargers, the all-wheel-drive Chargers, to demo them, to see if they're going to work for the needs. And if those are too compact, the only other options are probably the Explorer, which has bumped up in price, and the Durango, Dodge Durango. And that each bumps up the cost of the squads about just under, I think, close to $8,000 more than what we're currently paying for the squads. So we're hoping to get by with the coupe. And Dodge is right now the only one in the market that is producing a four-door. So that's one of the things. So the overall, the increase from what the contract was for 19, for 20, it's a 4.5% increase. And that's based on those factors I had talked about. If you, if you wanted broke down a little bit more, and we'd certainly come, and if you would want me or the sheriff, I know this has been turnover with the mayor and some council that haven't heard one of these pitches before, so if you don't want to be cheated from that, we will certainly come back, so.
What does everyone think? I've heard their pitches.
I heard before, it's mandatory, we need it, we can list it if you want to, but it's a mandatory cost.
Anybody else?
I don't think we need anything. We can look at the budget proposal from them, and then...
Yep, they submitted, and it'll come, it'll come to you, yes.
If you have any questions, we can always ask them back.
I agree.
So then we will not ask for a presentation.
Okay.
But we'll go through the budget, and we'll call you up if we have any questions. How's that?
Fair enough.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything you would like to ask?
I seen him the other day, out of the uniform, and almost didn't recognize him. He had shorts on, even.
Was he riding a bike?
No, he was eating out.
Well, there we go. Thank you very much.
I tried to hide.
He just, almost did.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Our next, down to number 10, for the public open forum. Is there anybody here who would like to speak at the public open forum? If not, we will move on to number 11, the bid opening and award of the F-150 truck.
So exciting.
Mr. Mayor, no, sir, we're seeing two things, the F-150.
So we had had bids before, but, or, we hadn't had no bids before, so we put it on for another two weeks.
Right.
And this is what we have in response. Do I read them both aloud, or just the winner?
Bid number one, bid number two into the record, yes.
Okay, bid number one was from Ozzy Baron of Forest Lake, a bid of $800 for the 1999 Ford pickup truck. Address is Forest Lake. And the other bid was for $1,023 from Colleen Durine of Bender Street in Columbus. So the high bid is Colleen Durine, $1,023, no sense.
So now we need a motion to accept, accept that, the highest bid?
And Councilmember Durine, you'll be recusing yourself from the vote.
Correct.
So should he do that first? Recuse himself, or just not?
He's...
I won't vote.
He won't vote.
All right. So would someone make the motion?
I'll move to accept the two bids and award the bid to Colleen Durine in the amount of $1,023, understanding the vehicle is being sold as is.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So then, the truck will be delivered to Colleen, first thing in the morning.
Congratulations, Jeff.
I don't know nothing about it.
Go back to you.
Yes, thanks.
We're on to letter D, with the engineer report, starting with the direction of motion of the speed zone study request.
I believe you have in your packet a one-page memo, and in summary, a resident has asked for a, or has complaints about traffic sliding off the road on Kettle River Boulevard on the curve south of Broadway. And the memo is to request a speed study be done. I did, city staff spoke with Inoka County Traffic Engineer, I did as well, and right now, so you have different speed limits on Kettle River. You have 55 from Lake to 165th, you have 50 from 165th to Broadway, and then you have 55 again north of Broadway. And the last time speed studies were done on this section was in 1978, so it's been 40 years. One thing that is noted in the memo to caution is that if a speed study is done, and it indicates a higher speed is warranted, then you are legally warranted to do that, to raise it. So it doesn't necessarily mean it's going down, which is the intent typically of doing a speed study. So 55 is the unpost, is the normal, and this section has a 50 right now. It has warning signs on the corners as you approach that curve of 45. So you can definitely make, order a speed study through the county, who then makes that formal request to MINDOT. You also don't have to, if you do go that route, you don't have to pass a formal resolution, you can if you want to, but direction to staff of an email or a letter is also sufficient to the county. And it takes anywhere from six to 12 or longer months to get the results, depending on MINDOT's One other, another option to entertain is asking the county to analyze the curve, the geometrics of it, the clear zone, the superelevation, and they would do a study on it, and they might even have the county take some speed measurements along there, which then you're not legally bound, as part of the speed study, to utilize, and just be part of their analysis. I don't know if there's a speeding issue, but this resident has had some, apparently some incidents of cars sliding off the road.
Discussion, everyone?
I was surprised at the speed, just because you're going into that brand-new roundabout, right?
And that's quite a ways back.
It's about a quarter mile.
But I mean, by that time, you have to be down to 20, right?
Yeah, I believe the, sounds like the issue's going south and going off the, off the, I believe.
So the cars are coming south, 50 miles an hour, then there's...
Not making that curve, if it's slippery or something.
Is it, is it true, this is primarily a problem in the winter? This is when the mailboxes are getting taken out, is in the winter?
That's just what I understand from the memo that staff put together.
So I'm just wondering if the request to do the, have the county look at it should be made in the winter for them to do it, since that seems to be when the problem is? Unless this just isn't complete in what the whole issue is? I don't know if you know.
You know, when they do the speed study, it's for all year round. I don't think it's for one season when they do the study.
No, I meant the second option that Dennis was suggesting.
If the county just looks at the geometrics of the roadway. I mean, they can do that anytime, because it's not going to change the geometrics, it would just change the conditions, if it's...
But they could also, if they did it in the wintertime, they could check to see how fast people are actually going, according to the conditions, in a non-binding way.
Again, if you request a formal study be done, then you're tied to whatever the results are. It could go down, could stay the same, could go up.
Is that the procedure that usually goes through the city to change a county road speed limit, or do they just go right through the county?
The city would request the county, if a city resident was asking, or the city council chose to do so. Then the county takes over, they actually pass a resolution, and then they submit to MINDOT.
What's the cost to the city?
I don't think there's a cost to the city.
No cost?
Either way.
So everyone, what do you, which direction would you like to take?
I don't think they're going to lower it. I'm all for lower speed limits, but I don't think they're going to go lower than 50 on a county road. What do you want to do, ask for a speed study, so just request a speed study? Just go all the way, then?
Again, if you do that, and it comes back that the 85th percentile is actually 55, then they're going to post a 55. So I guess I'd recommend just talking to the county first about looking at the actual condition of that curve in the roadway, and see if they can come up with something. If they can't, then maybe next step would be a speed study.
All right. They do that.
So what do you need, just direction from the council?
That can be direction, if there's no formal action required, then. The speed study would require formal action, the direction doesn't.
So then you do that, Dennis?
I can do that.
Get along with the county and...
Sure.
Ask them to look at it, give us an opinion, and if it's necessary, we can always go back for a formal study. All right? Everybody agree to that? About information on our transportation project status?
Yeah, just update on projects in the city. There's three under construction that are city projects, and starting with the Notre Dame 181st project, they have the paving done. They still need to finish the shouldering and some of the mailbox work. We are going to have them redo some of the saw cut and sealing that they did on 181st, due to the quality of it, so there may be a little rework there on the contractor's cost. Northeast Utilities, the sewer and water, that project's done, just some minor punchless items on some of the structures, to finish that up. Southwest Utilities, down by 54 in the freeway triangle, they've done some of the clearing and grubbing this week, the tree removal on the west ditch, you'll notice, and then put up some erosion control, and hopefully we'll be starting next week with the actual drilling, directional drilling of the sanitary sewer under I-35, and the lift station construction. And then there'll also be, by open cut, gravity, installing sanitary sewer on that west ditch from the freeway down to not quite the city limits. So that, there'll be more construction starting next week. That may last about three weeks or so, maybe four. And then we're still working on Hornsby Street realignment. We have a big meeting this Friday with all the agencies, talk about the status and the schedule, and funding. I think you've maybe also, getting on MINDOT's project, the design build, you may have seen notices that they're closing the northbound ramps, changed that twice, and now it's still not closed, so we're just waiting. They're going to give about a week's notice when they are going to close the northbound ramp, so the off, the off-ramp from 35 to 97, and the on-ramp going north from 97 to 35. Those will be closed for 30 or 40 days, when they close those to work on the ramps. Part of the reason that the date has changed is a shortage of material with cement and some other products, so. We're seeing also, like I mentioned before, due to contractors being busy and quantities being in shorter supply, bid prices coming in 20 to 30% higher than they did three or four months ago.
And the shortage is just because there's so much building going on?
A lot of building going on, and there's also some suppliers have consolidated, or there's only one or two available in certain areas.
All right. But they plan to have it done by winter?
The design bill, as far as I know, is not going to change its completion date. They just move around and do different parts, they have that flexibility.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Attorneys report?
Mr. Mayor and counsel, this topic's been in front of you a couple times, so we have a hotel lodging tax ordinance for your consideration tonight. In addition, I'm just going to pass out a short memo, which I can walk through, it's not long. You wanted some information regarding surrounding communities and what they're charging, and so when you, when you get that memo, you'll just want to flip to the last two pages, and while you're doing that, I'll just walk through a couple of them. I think the most important comparable set is on page three towards the bottom. Coon Rapids, Lino Lakes, and Blaine all charge the statutory maximum of 3%. If you see more than 3% for Minneapolis, St. Paul, Bloomington, and others, they got those additional taxes by special law, so the statute that we would be under is a maximum of 3%. We've put that in the ordinance for your consideration. When there was discussions with the owner of the hotel, there was not a pushback on charging the tax, they just wanted to make sure they were, you know, comparable to surrounding areas. So the nearest communities that charge a hotel tax are in the 3% range. As you're looking at that, a couple of things of note is the revenues, 95% of the revenues have to be used for a tourism or convention bureau. We anticipate that the revenues would not be sufficient in the early days to have a fully dedicated, separate bureau, and so the concept that would be most likely brought back for your consideration would be to create a nonprofit. The nonprofit would be your convention bureau. It could have a management contract with the city. Some portion of city staff time could be devoted to that activity of marketing, marketing the community, and its entertainment facilities, and its lodging facilities, and then maybe over time, as that revenue grows, it would be a, you know, completely freestanding entity. In most communities, they have some combination of council representation, council members sitting on the convention bureau, plus members of the industry, plus folks who are at large. So that's, that's for a later date. I think the main consideration tonight is, since the hotel may open as soon as October, they would probably like to set up their POS systems and other, you know, accounting to account for a 3% tax, if that's something you're interested in.
So when you talk to running aces, they weren't opposed, but is this something you could do at a later time, you don't have to do right now? I mean, would it make any difference to them if we didn't do it for a couple years, and see how it went, and see where we go? Because I see a lot of them aren't doing it. Hugo, Andover, Inoka County, Forest Lake doesn't do it. I hate to, I actually hate to charge the tax, so that's just...
Again, one of the reasons that they were not opposed is because if this is the market and other facilities are charging the tax, they don't see it as being non-competitive. The other thing is, one of the reasons cities generally like this tax is it's paid from, not generally from residents. But certainly, you don't have to adopt it tonight. The consideration for adopting it tonight, or soon, is so that they can be set up in their accounting systems and their purchasing systems, but if you want to defer it as a council, that's certainly your decision.
I would guess it's less expensive for them to set it up upfront than to go back and change it.
I'm just wondering how expensive it is. I don't think it'd be that much just to change the tax base on a room, on a room a night. I don't know.
It's probably more than that. It's also all the reporting they have to do on it.
One of, one of the things that I've experienced working for the hospitality industry in Bloomington and elsewhere is the, the biggest concern you have is when you open, and so obviously, they call that period the period of stabilization. So it may be if you defer this, and again, this is your call, so I'm not advocating one way or the other, but the, if you defer this, and a year from now, they're concerned about, you know, marketing and what to be done with marketing, it takes some time to ramp that up. We'll have to create a nonprofit, we'll have to create a bureau, you'll have to determine who's going to provide these services. So one advantage of doing it now is you basically start with their opening, and start thinking about marketing that property. Now, of course, they're going to market the property, and that's their job, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying that this will affect their sales, but it will take some time. If you say go a year from now, we're going to take all the steps that we've described.
Well, Hugo doesn't have any because there's no hotels. But Forest Lake does not. However, the discussions we've had with the track people, they were not opposed to it. So I'm not opposed to it.
I'm surprised they said they want to be competitive. Forest Lake doesn't have a tax, and...
Forest Lake doesn't have a racetrack either.
They got hotels, but we're talking about a hotel, and they have five hotels?
We're talking about, the only hotel we got is right now is the ones coming on the racetrack, and we just want to make use of it.
Charge a tax, okay.
Well, the other thing is, the hotel being right on the highway and everything and highly visible, it's like some of the other... Forest Lake, you have to go into town, it's more of a, I don't know, I don't even know what those hotels are really used for, but it's a different situation than when you're coming up the highway and you see.
So, would someone like to make a motion?
Would be ordinance 1902.
I'd like to make a motion, adopt ordinance 1902, establishing hotel lodging tax.
Is there a second?
A second.
A call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
It passes. Five to one.
Four to one.
Four to one, sorry. The next will be the mayor and city council members' report, number 14, Denny.
I want to add to Dennis's report here. Lexington and Broadway, the light, they got the lights up, the road's done, striping's all done. They don't have the light, they don't have a wire yet, but they're up and they're working on it. It's 99% complete. Good job, you guys want to go some Sunday afternoon and drive out there and look at it.
And that's right on the...
On Lexington and Broadway.
Corner.
Right on the T, yeah, yeah. They widened the road and put new blacktop in it. It's isn't country anymore, we're picking into the city. That's all I have.
I'm trying to think of when it was. It was like right after our last council meeting. I met with the residents, three of the residents, on Humbert Street about their complaints about the trucking, CTS trucking, and it was actually, it was a really, I think, constructive conversation, and they're going to go back to documenting, all three of them independently, when they are having problems. You and I are going to take a road trip out there sometime in the dark to investigate the light problem. Again, I know you've done it once already, Jesse, we'll see if there's been any changes there. And then I was just asking Dennis if he knew of any sort of device that actually measures noise on sort of a long-term basis, because that might be something they want to invest in, to get a more objective measurement of the problem that they seem to be having, so he's going to get back to me on some options there.
Oh, nothing, nothing.
I just wanted to add that, in addition to the information I sent out with the EDA packet that I gave you, I have signed up with an organization that has a series of videos on branding a small town, and I'm going to be watching those, and I get that for free until December, so I'll keep giving updates on the information about that, to see what the advantages and disadvantages would be. That's it.
Thank you. About the only thing I have, besides the long holiday week without much in the office, is we took Mrs. Vento around on a really nice, like a two-hour tour of the city. If you remember, a year or two ago, we had a different representative, and she wasn't very interested, or wasn't able to be interested, and Mrs. Vento, it seems, is quite interested. And she was happy to spend the time, she said she enjoyed it, and she would be happy to come back. So maybe we have a good ally on the Met Council. I know she's new also, but at least she's got some gumption. So, we had a good tour of all the things going on. I think it was probably be beneficial to us in the future. Public Works report?
Fire board meeting?
No.
Elizabeth, are we going to talk about that? Fire board meeting?
We did have a fire board meeting two weeks ago.
Yes, I think it was...
So Elizabeth and Jeff and I met...
New chairperson?
Oh, yeah. And now we have a new chairperson, who is the mayor of Forest Lake, and we discussed the budget increase or a pay increase for the firemen, and then also an increase on their, and we passed the increase on their...
Relief Association.
Relief Association. But our next meeting will take back up the budget, or the increase for their wages, and cash that out, but when is that meeting? It's not till September?
I want to say it was the third week in August, but I haven't seen the date yet.
Yeah, I don't think they set it up yet. It's sometime there.
The Fire Relief Association is, that is funded through the state of Minnesota, and right now it is funded at 212%, and they felt it was time to talk about an increase. So the Fire Relief Association did present to us, along with their auditors, on the pros and cons of doing an increase. The only time that the municipalities are at risk in a fire relief situation is when it's not funded, and when they... It's usually when it's a bad year for investments, because the fire relief dollars are put into the market, just like others' investments, and so if they don't have enough to cover the pensions, then the municipalities have to put the increment in to make it fully funded. So there's, I want to say 2001, 2003, and eight are the years that it wasn't fully funded, and so at this point, they felt that because it was at 212%, and the recommendation was that we kept it at 150%, that perhaps they would be able to get a $500 increase. And the way that works is, you get a certain dollar amount for every year you have a service, and then after 20 years, when you retire, you get that amount. I'm not recalling the amount of the yearly amount that the firefighters get today, but the idea was, the motion was, they get a $500 increase this year, and then they would get a $200 increase next year, and then it would...
I believe it's close to $4,700 a year?
Okay.
And $500 for this year, and then $200 a year for five years?
Well, for five years, okay.
And it'd be looked at every two years?
Yeah, I remember we were going to review it every two years. All right, Jessica, public?
I have no report tonight.
No report, all right. Elizabeth, city administrator's report?
So, in your additions tonight, we received a memo from Jenny Williams from Anoka County. Every few years, Anoka County will put certain property that came to them through tax forfeiture, and they have a sale. And in this particular case, there are three parcels in Columbus that they would like to put for sale for tax forfeiture. So, what I did, because they only gave us pin numbers, what I did is I put maps together so I could show you which properties are taxed for here in Columbus, and then I'll go through each one as to issues. So the first one that I have on here is, it's a very small sliver. It is in the freeway district, and this used to be owned by a family. I had talked to the family several years ago, because they felt Mindot would buy it. It's a remnant left over from when the freeway went through, and they felt that they really couldn't do anything with it, and so the family, they basically told me they were going to not pay taxes on it anymore, because they felt they couldn't use it for anything. And neither Mindot nor the adjacent property owner have bid on it, and really is of no use, except those two adjoining property owners. It's, as you can see, a very small sliver of property. The second one is also in the freeway district, it's just north of Coates Trailer. This has been in tax forfeiture, or it was taken over in tax forfeiture in 2010. And this one, when we get to the end, we'll talk a little bit more about detail on this one, because there's some issues here that we'll have to talk through. The third parcel is on 170th Avenue. I don't know a lot about this parcel, other than, as you can see, there's a fair amount of wetland on the parcel, and it is in tax forfeiture. Today, when we subdivide land, there's a reason why we require soil borings and a buildable area located, because we won't let people subdivide property unless we know that it's buildable and that you can get a septic system on it. So that's why I'm a little surprised on this one, because this is part of a subdivision, and maybe at that time, they didn't require each lot to be buildable, but it is a lot of record, and I'm not sure whether it actually can be built on or not. I don't have enough information on it. The last page is, I know it's a complicated sheet, but I'm going to go back to the second diagram to tell you why we're going to go to the last sheet. The very last question from Anoka County is about special assessments, and they need the answer by July 12th as to whether or not we're going to reinstate special assessments. So going back to the second property, this property is in the freeway district, and this property had five special assessments on it, and it had to do with sewer and water assessments. And, so the very last page, now I'll jump to the very last page, and talk you through a little bit about the projects. So the first project was trunk sewer, the second project was the freeway crossing cost, it was sanitary sewer pipes, water main, and then trunk water. So on the very left side, I'm sorry, on the very right-hand side, so before forfeiture, because you have several years in commercial property before it actually is taken over for tax forfeiture, $46,413 was not paid. And at a certain point, when a property goes forfeiture, Anoka County is allowed to cancel the special assessments. So at this point, the specials got canceled, and we didn't collect. The principal that we didn't collect was $81,902.62. Keep that in mind when I tell you that I have to carry some special assessments on people who don't pay. Okay. So, we're talking about roughly, let's just say $130,000 in this particular case. So the question from Anoka County is, you have this tax-forfeited property, the specials have been canceled. In other words, you won't collect this money at this point, but now you have the opportunity to reassess, and this is where I need Bill's help, because I know there's a process, I just don't know what it is. But what the email says is, they want to know is if you want to, it says, "Please notify me by Friday, July 12th, if there's any special assessments that should be considered." So my question to the council is, it is your choice whether you reinstate the specials or whether you let it remain canceled on the property. If it remains canceled, they don't have, the next person who buys that property is not responsible for paying them.
Then who has paid them? Who makes up the difference?
The city.
The city.
So, normally the calculus or calculation would be whether the property has the ability in terms of value to cover those special assessments, such that there would be a buyer at a sale. Now, it is immediately adjacent to Coates', and we've had lots of issues with trailer storage, so presumably if there's high, dry land, someone's going to buy it, because it's either going to be used for more trailers or for development. I just don't know, as we sit here, whether it's wet, dry, or a little bit of both. So if you believe that a buyer would be able to not only buy the property and put it to good value, but also pay the assessments, there's no reason you would want to forgive those assessments. On the other hand, if you think that it's kind of a wash, and that the special assessments will prevent it from being sold and developed, you may decide that it's a cost of the city that allows for the development of that property. I think generally, the city's positions would be to recapture that opportunity to get the special assessments paid by a private property owner rather than your taxpayers. And I actually would have to look at the statute to see how you re-impose those, but obviously, if the county's asking whether we want to, there's a way to do it.
Opportunity to do it. Well, I think we should try to recapture it, because much of that property is dry and buildable, so whether they use it for parking, if someone else came and built it, you could build a nice building on there, there's no reason they should not have to pay the assessments that everyone else on the street has had to pay, as long as we have the opportunity. So do we need a motion, or do you just want direction?
I think it'd be helpful to have a motion, because that's a formal action of the council, and we can say that the council acted, and it's clear that what our direction is.
Is there any other discussion, anybody?
Could you tell me a little history on this? Coates bought the front of the property.
The freeway side.
Freeway side? How many feet is that?
That property was never attached to the wood property, the property that they bought was from the property owner to the north, so the woods property never went out to the freeway.
Am I mistaken, or was this property up for sale a couple, 10, five, 10 years ago?
This property has been up twice.
I mean, in front of us?
Yes, this property has been twice up for tax forfeiture and did not sell. My understanding is, they put it up either for $350 or $380 the last sheriff's sale, and it did not sell.
How long ago was that, you know?
No, they do it every two or three years, they do not do tax forfeiture property every year.
Definitely be nice to get the taxes paid by somebody who bought the property. Assessments, I mean.
One thing to consider, and I don't know if this will come into play, but Camping World did buy Coates Trailer, and they have a need for storage. Now, the question is whether you, as a city, would allow that type of storage on that property, but that's for another day, but I just wanted you to be aware of that as you consider your...
Can that be attached to the, attach that piece to the Gander Mountain piece?
Yeah, if they replod it.
And if they pay their assessments? So who gets the money for that forfeited land, the county?
I think it goes, there's an order of priority, depending on the liens. So the lien of taxes and assessments always come before any mortgage. I don't know if there's a mortgage on the property, or if there was, before it was wiped out through the forfeiture. So, there would be an order of priority, and if there's any money left, it would go, I presume, to the county.
Are special assessments at the top?
They're near the top. Taxes and assessments are a prior lien to any private lien.
So would someone like to make a motion? That we recommend to the county to reinstate the assessments on the woods property?
I make a motion to move or to approve special assessments to be considered in parcel 253222340002, in the amount of $127,906.76, which is the principal only, as indicated on the table presented for the five public improvement projects.
I just want to clarify the principal only.
Just wait for a second.
I'm sorry.
Second. All right, now go ahead.
My understanding is, you cannot include the interest on the future, that you could only include the interest previous to 2010, so that's why it's principal only, the principal only was in the future years. Like, once it's canceled, I can't charge interest, so that's what the principal only comment in that motion was for.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion, anyone? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that passes five to nothing.
I have one other thing, and it's just so that everyone knows. We received a joint powers agreement from Rice Creek Watershead District in reference to Thernbeck Preserve Phase Two, and so for Shelley and Janet, when you go to your sunrise meeting, so I've requested it in Jenna item, I've requested a... it in Jenna item, I've requested a Jenna item on the Sunrise agenda, and I've sent it to them, so it's for your July 18th meeting. And what that is, is we talked last meeting about the boundary issue and the jurisdictional line of what, between Sunrise and Rice Creek, and it's to approve that joint powers agreement and that boundary adjustment for that plat. So just so you know, that's on the agenda. I have asked them if they want staff representation to present it, and I haven't gotten an answer yet. You'll be there.
Get ready, ladies. Anyone have anything else you'd like to add before we're finished? If you'll look on the announcements and reminders, the city council workshop, 7:24, which isn't that far away, 4 o'clock. Plating Commission is 7:17, at 7. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Has everyone signed all the documents you needed?
I believe they are.
Yep.
Okay. Should I call for a board?
I think you might have.